All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Just heard from Councilman Eigner, he's in the parking lot, he'll be here in just a minute. Dan, can we get a roll call, please?
Yep, Councilmember Bain.
Here.
Councilmember Husnick.
Here.
Councilmember Eigner.
Here.
Councilmember Freer.
Here.
And Mayor Winnick.
Here. I'll ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And can we get the sign up sheet out here, please?
Your Honor, on the agenda, I just request that Item 6H be removed. That's just got some modifications that need to be made.
All right, sounds good. I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Now we'll open up the open forum.
I'm Gary Lee, I'm from Forest Lake. And my message tonight is in regard to the school bonding and levy issue that's coming up on November 7th. And the school district is asking us to approve an increase of $750 per student so that they can maintain and retain the teachers that they have and the programs that they currently have. That, by increasing that amount, it would put us basically in the middle of the funding that our district gets from our citizens compared to the metro, other metro communities. We moved, my wife and I moved to Forest Lake about 23 years ago, and our children had already grown. So I don't have personal experience with the schools and how they do and what they do and that type of thing, but based on discussions with my neighbors, everybody seems to have a very high regard to how the school does. However, there's a lot of things that they could add to what they're doing, and the most important thing is retaining experienced teachers. I'm told that an experienced teacher can go to a neighboring district and get a $5,000 to $8,000 raise, doing the same amount of work, the same class and that type of thing. So those are the teachers that we want to retain, and we don't want the kind of turnover that's been happening in the last few years because of having to cut a lot of things. They have extremely strong programs for students that are going on to college and can get college credit while going to high school, and many of these programs become in jeopardy when there's not enough funding. So I would encourage you to support that levy. I kind of compare it to what we did for pickleball. I know that everybody would be disappointed if I didn't talk about pickleball. So I compare it to, you know, for 10 years, we had a slab out on Fenway, in Fenway Fields, that sat there, and it was a very good, basic foundation, but nothing was being done with it, nothing was happening with it. So, and your council approved spending some money to build pickleball courts on this slab. And because of that, we ended up with a very positive, productive type of an asset for the city. And we've had, we've got like 95 regular players, and any morning you would stop over there between 9:00 and 12:00, warm, you would find between 25 and 30 players that are enjoying that, that were not out being active before. The school has that same basic foundation. And so what they're asking for is some additional money to improve that foundation, and we need to support that. The second part of the vote that's coming up in November is for bonding for facilities. And basically, this part of it has to do with the arts, music, athletics, athletic fields, fields that are basically, in some cases, so run down that other teams won't come here for competition. We can't host different meets and so on because the facilities are that poor. The details of these kind of things, along with the other levy, I think each person has kind of the responsibility to see, how much would it cost me in taxes, and what are they really going to do with it? And I don't have the exact details of everything that would be done, but I guess I would encourage you to, number one, support the levy and the bond publicly, and I would ask that you tell at least 10 people to vote yes, so that we could do some improvements to our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick Chita, 21833 Healy. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. What caught my eye when I went through your packet this time was the 190th, that's on the agenda. Rezoning, change of the muciline, some other issues. You know, the question I really have is, I was co-owner of some property on 180th, which is also 1 to 20, 1 out of 20, and requested some change, and of course, it was denied. It wasn't the right timing at the time, that's what the answer was. I was also on the town board at the time that the Pelicans came in and requested the same property, what could they do, develop it? I mean, they've been here for God knows how long, before I was here, and I've been here over 50 years. So they have a vested interest in this community. And when you look at it and you look at what's being requested, three to four homes to the acre, you're setting a precedence, you want the muciline adjusted. It seems as though there's a psychology here that's working, that if you're a resident and a taxpayer, you play by the rules. If you're a developer, you fill your pockets and leave town. I don't know if you've been following what's going on in California right now, but they just evacuated La Rosa, California, 20,000 people, and the comments that were made was the housing was so dense that once they got one house on fire, it took the entire block. Well, I've sat back and watched you change the zoning or allow zoning with five-foot setbacks for garages, on side setbacks between property. I think you could ask our fire chief, how many rigs he can get in a 10-foot opening to fight a fire. I think your obligation is public safety, and I think that when you start looking at making changes, when you already have about 1,500 vacant, available properties within the municipal line, why are you looking at another project outside or an adjustment? I think that your obligation really is a betterment of the community, and I hope that when you look at these projects, you look at it net view and not with a view of just expansion or trying to accommodate. A developer can do very well on one house per acre, or if you have to have an onsite sewer system, maybe it has to be one house per two acres or two and a half acres in order to accommodate that. But I think that responsibility should be addressed and looked at very thoroughly before you make a decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Taylor, 19480 Fenway. Thank you for giving me the opportunity, gentlemen. So, lifetime resident, 60 years, same address. Purchased adjoining property to this, just this year, prior to any of these things happening. I look at the comp plan, and comp plan says agricultural. I look where my farm is, and it's MX-1, it's going to be built, and I'm looking down the road and saying, I'm moving to the agricultural part. I'm accepting that we have the Tanner's Brook across from my driveway, put the Edina Realty sign up, probably be single family, or not single family, probably something, higher density than the 10 acres it is now. We've had a comp plan in place for a long time and for good reason, and I'm not opposed to the 10 acres across my driveway. I don't like it, but I'm not opposed to it because we're zoned for it. This is something we've been planning for, it's given everybody a little time to plan for it. But we've had a tremendous amount of discussion at the planning committee, tremendous involvement of the community affected by these requests. Everyone that lives on those gravel roads understands that one house puts 10 cars on that dirt road every day. I mean, the dust is so bad that, I mean, it's, you don't even get, it's a haze all day long. And I know we're trying to fix like 190th, I appreciate that the city is trying to deal with these things, but the basic point that we're, is that a lot of discussion, a lot of good people have brought this forward, had the planning committee, and at the end of the day, the planning committee voted seven to one to table this. And personally, I think that, you know, this could be a great thing five years from now, but without the infrastructure, yeah, without the infrastructure, we're putting the cart way out in front of this horse. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Betty Bender, 18980 Fenway Avenue, and I would like to speak to Agenda Item 7A, 190th Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and that starts on page 80 in your packet. So page 80 in your packet is the latest recommendation from the planning committee. We have been meeting for months about this issue, letters went out to the neighbors about Mr. Caleb Smith and Gen D Properties wanting to develop a 14-acre parcel. So, public comment was collected, the neighbors were asked to have a special community meeting, and we had that meeting, and we gave feedback, and the feedback is that the neighbors feel like you're plopping a housing development in the middle of an agricultural area, and it is outside of the current comp plan. The planning committee reviewed standards for zoning map amendments, there's 13 items. In those standards, we talked about all of them, and it comes down to this housing request is spot zoning, a leapfrog request for one individual. And I have no doubt that Gen D Properties will build nice homes, but with the lack of infrastructure, I feel like it's an idea ahead of its time, and I would ask that the council would review page 80. The first sentence is the recommendation of the planning committee to, at this time, deny the request. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dennis Batty. I live at 22770 Imperial Avenue North. I'm a member of the planning commission, and I wanted to just come here tonight and talk a little bit about the 190th comp plan, whatever, however you want to refer to it. I think everybody just refers to it as the 190th. But I voted with the majority on that to deny approval of it. Yeah, I did it with a good deal of hesitancy and soul searching because, and for several I, I'm always excited when I see someone who, and I don't mean to be cute here or this to be a pun, but when people push the edge, when people go after something, when somebody finds something that they believe in and they don't just take no for an answer once, they keep coming back. And I, I like that. And I, I'm one who believes that our, the city of Forest Lake is going to continue to be expanded beyond what it is right now. I, I'm one who am very much pro-development, pro, I want to do everything that I can as a member of the planning commission to encourage development, encourage increasing our tax base, encourage bringing jobs into the city with industry and that sort of thing. And I think that we, because of the wonderful natural resources that we have here and the lay of the land and just simply the amount of land that we're, the 36 square miles that we're dealing with, we have wonderful resources. And, but, the, when you sit on the planning commission, you have, you can't just look at an individual application. You have to take the 30,000-foot elevation view of something, particularly when it is outside the normal scheme of things. And this definitely is, and I, I basically voted against it for two reasons. If it had just been the location, if it had just been access to sewer, I would have voted for it. But that's not, that's not the total picture. The whole, there's four major elements here that you have to consider, location, sewer, water, and street infrastructure. And we simply don't have, we simply don't have, I could not in good conscience vote for it because we simply don't have, I'll speak to the easy one, the street. I mean, anybody who's driven 190th knows that we need to, first of all, we need to do something to it, but we also need to, you know, it has to be improved. We can't add significant amounts of traffic to it without doing something to it. And the other thing is, we don't have water. And when, until the city is willing to commit to, you know, dealing with these two areas of infrastructure, I think we have to, I think we have to treat these things the way we treated this.
Thank you. Greg? Sean? Shontek?
Schwentek.
Schwentek, of course.
Pretty German name.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm not going to take any more time other than to say I agree with everybody that already has spoken on this issue. I'm going to go back a few years when the city gobbled up the township. One of the arguments was, we're going to get state aid for roads. Nothing, nothing has been done for the roads. We still have a, an issue with Highway 97 where Mendat doesn't want to call it a collector road. You've got people coming from Wisconsin through here, it's an east-west road. It's a, it's a very dangerous road. You've got people trying to get on it, get off it. There's so many issues here. We're a young city, we have land, let's develop it properly within, it takes a long. And I've been here for 32 years, and not, not a lot has changed. But the quality of life that we have down there, you see a neighbor, you wave. That's going to change with density and everything else, but let's do the common sense thing I don't mean to babble, I'm just saying, it's been very frustrating for us living out there where, unfortunately, I have 30 acres, and now I'm paying $250 a month for the school system, the infrastructure that never got addressed for how many years? Because the budget didn't address upgrading, dot, the dot, the dot. So fortunately, I can afford to pay my property taxes, but I'm not living on a lake. I'm spending 500 bucks a month on property taxes. And I'm on a gravel road that recently got recycled on it, and then they chipped up the road, up the street, so now there's a dust issue again. But I moved, I built my house in 700 feet in the woods, so I didn't have the dust issue. I don't know if I'll live long enough to see the infrastructure come down there. It takes time. But I apologize for babbling, but I'm, like most people here, pretty frustrated, folks. So let's get a plan, let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And last one is Henry Volker?
Odell. Evening, city council members, and here to discuss about the 190th Street project. You've heard several things and probably other things, but one of the things that has really become an issue is that as the first public hearing occurred on what was supposedly a 14-acre parcel for rezoning and comp planned amendment, we found that expanded to 184 acres. And we've learned that a lot of the adjacent neighbors aren't or weren't aware of that too. But most of the folks on 190th Street have been to these meetings and expressed their The situation with the development is small lots in an area of large lots, and if you're going to spot zone this area and then allow small lots, expect adjacent neighbors and other landowners to want the same thing. We're in a 10 and 20-acre lot area. There are several houses that are in five or six-acre lots, and they were the pre-1974 plating that occurred, and then the larger lot zoning went on. But traditionally, this area has been agriculture, it's in transition. That it isn't agriculture is not a reason to rezone it unless the infrastructure is available. And infrastructure just can't mean another lot, an acre, acre and a half, and a private well, and onsite sewer treatment. Bigger things have to happen in this area for the future planning and development of the city. The expenses cited by the city engineer to loop a water line, three miles of 1.3 million, I believe, and then expected other city improvements following pavement, curb, stormwater, sanitary sewer extensions, another eight million-plus dollars. And that's just first guess. That doesn't count the in-development expenses, I'm sure. However, I think the issue here is really, this is spot zoning, it's leapfrog development, and it isn't a good precedent for the city to consider it unless infrastructure is going to follow. It's designated for 2030 in the comprehensive plan, and of course, the comprehensive plan is being looked at now. So some considerations should be had because there's been some pending concept of development. And I hope that the city will, at this point, realize that it's not the right time and it's not the right zoning. And let's let this issue rest until it goes through the comprehensive plan revisions. And thank you for hearing me.
All right. Thank you.
Oh, and I have a petition of over 20 signatures from adjacent property owners who expressed their opposition to the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning action. Who should I give those to?
Can I get a Dan or Donovan, you want to take them there? And with that, that ends our open forum. I would like to call up, no, the Clear Lake, it's on, the consent agenda. Before we make any motions on the consent agenda, Mr. Waller, would you like to come up and speak today? John Waller, our Rice Creek Watershed District Representative? Thank you for coming tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm John Waller, I live at 14310 Homestead Avenue, it's 14010, sometimes I get confused with the farm address, too, in Hugo, Minnesota. And today, our watershed workshop this afternoon, we forwarded to the Wednesday's business meeting, and I assume it'll be passed, the requests that were made by the Forest Lake staff, and I want to thank Aaron Parrish and Ryan Goodman. They provided with the requests. One of them is for the Clear Lake Forest, Rice Creek Watershed District study up near the school district, if you go to Clear Lake. And I assume the grant money will be passed, there doesn't seem to be any opposition at this time. And then we had, we put $50,000 last month, found $50,000 someplace, and for Washington County cities. And, ah, don't shake your head, sir, let's shake it in approval. And 24,200 of it should come up here to work down on the Highway 61 Moore project area where we've had a problem in order to help correct that. And, but we didn't let the 50,000 escape, Hugo got a chunk of the change, too. So, but that's good. And by using that stormwater plan and by the aggressiveness of your staff, that's how our tax money comes back into our communities. And so I'm going to keep encouraging them to keep your staff, if you want the rules changed at the watershed district, if you want more money to come back for different items from the watershed district, use that stormwater plan as a building block to make sure, because we're paying in, as a county, over $800,000 annually. And otherwise, if we don't have the plan there and we don't put it in the watershed plan, then that money goes down to other communities in Ramsey or in Opa County. So thank you very much to your staff, and I hope you continue the aggressiveness of asking for more money and rule changes where they're necessary.
All right, thank you very much.
I find it amazing that only government can find $50,000.
Councilman, Freer, the amazing part of it is it's only 50,000. Remember, we were looking for 840 to come back to our county.
Absolutely.
And so we want, that's the goal. We pay in $840,000, we want the money paid in in Washington County spent back here.
We agree with that.
And so that's how, why I encourage your staff and engineers to be aggressive, and not just in Forest Lake, but in Hugo, Monmouth, Birchwood, Delwood, Willarney, we have a little bit of May Township, and a little bit of Scandia also. We have a little bit of May Township and a little bit of Scandia also, Grant, and a little bit of Grant in there. So have our communities have our money come back. But, and so I'm very happy with them. They've been very kind to me and, and supported me with, by making these requests and I appreciate that very much from your staff.
All right. Thank you. So we will move on to the consent agenda, look for an approval or changes there, too.
Mr. Mayor, I move, would like to remove items B and items H and move all the rest of the items on the consent agenda.
All right. Do we have a second to that?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us back to item six B.
I was not here for that meeting.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from September twenty-fifth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and abstained?
Abstained.
All right. That closes that out. And item six H is being removed because that is not ready yet, is my understanding, yeah?
That's correct.
All right. So that brings us to regular agenda. Donovan, you want to take us through seven A?
Sure. What you have before you is the comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment for the Gendy Properties. This is a, for a rezoning from agricultural zoning district to single-family zoning district, also changing the future land use plan from future urban residential to low-density residential. You've seen this before as a concept subdivision back in May and then more recently as a subject of, you know, workshop discussion in September. Here's the property.
Can you clarify something for everyone here? Right now, it's ag, which means one house for twenty?
One house for twenty. That's correct. Twenty acres, yes.
And low density residential is?
Is anywhere, it's the range from one point five dwelling units per acre to three dwelling units per acre.
What is our city? What, I mean, what standard for that?
That is the single, as a single-family zoning district, is, that's what equates a single-family zoning district.
Okay.
And that's the proposed zoning map amendment is to single-family. So the minimum lot size would be twenty-five thousand square feet. You know, as, as noted, this property is different in a way because the applicant has identified the Metropolitan Interceptor Sewer running along this western boundary as, as a source of public sewer. And so that does allow for that, that smaller, the smaller lots. The, I'll show you the, your location of that. The the Plan Commission did review this at their September twenty-eighth meeting. They voted seven to one to recommend city council denial. At this point, this applicant, Mr. Caleb Smith, who's here, is seeking the city council authorization to submit this to the, to the Metropolitan Council. And once the Metropolitan Council does, if the, if the city does, city council does vote for that, the council does their process, then it comes back to the city. This is all proceeding, a sort of plating procedure. And the the petition that was submitted along with the Plan Commission meeting, you have a paper copy as well as the one that was also submitted. And Mr. Smith did email me today saying that the golf course does support this application. So right now, before you is the decision to authorize the submittal of the comprehensive plan amendment to the Metropolitan Council. I'm happy to take, take any questions to the city council.
Mr. Freer?
Donovan, let's, let's clarify what this, what this means if this is passed or if it went through the Planning Commission and it was passed there. What's, all it means, if I'm correct, is it goes to the Met Council. They have it, they have an application into the Met Council just for a, the first step, if you will, correct? It does not approve the project. It does not move it forward other than to take a first step towards a comp plan amendment. Is that correct?
That is correct. At the risk of too much information, this is the project review process on your screen. So at this point, we're at the city council authorization to submit. So this does not divide any land, does not constitute project approval. It's simply city council's blessing that we believe there's a, a policy change should be made to expand the Metropolitan Urban Service Area and to also change this to that, from that agriculture zoning to the, I mean, it's a policy decision that would, would be formally adopted when it comes back, but right now, it's simply decision to do the comprehensive plan amendment to change the municipal land boundary, to allow this, this type of development.
And if it's not approved by the Met Council, it's basically dead. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And right now, if it went through, it would be at the one point five to three homes per acre. But that's at least the, the concept plan and that can be changed as well after the application. Is that correct?
That's correct. That would be the planned density. I mean, oftentimes, the planned density and actual project density are, are different. Okay.
Donovan, I just had a clarification. On page eighty-seven and eighty-eight of the packet, there's a comp plan amendment application and there's a zoning map amendment application. So we're kind of voting for up or down two applications.
Well, formally, it is the, it's the comprehensive plan amendment since the, the comp plan can't be changed until, I mean, sorry, the zoning map cannot be changed until the, the comprehensive plan.
But you could vote, if you're going to vote them both up or both down, I mean, you could do both at the same time.
Well, that would, that would, there'd be, that would be a clean decision, yes.
I mean, I guess otherwise, I mean, if the, if the Met Council says the comp plan amendment's not going to go through even though the council wants to, then, then there will be no zoning change.
Correct.
Members, council, just on that logic, though, on these decisions, of course, you're working from kind of larger to smaller. When you're talking about the comp plan decision and the rezoning, as a city, you have a lot of latitude on how that decision's made. And you get to the next steps in terms of the plating actions and things like that and to the extent that the developer can come in and show compliance with zoning. There, there's not as much latitude you have in those decisions if they, they meet the specific requirements that are established in the zoning code. And so I think what you have to look at in an application like this is, is this the framework we want to have for the land? And then if that's the case, then, you know, it goes through kind of the next level of review. But just as you know, as you move kind of down that, you know, chain of decisions, your ability to, to say no gets to be less.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I just wanted to, you know, point out to you, when you have a comprehensive plan amendment, that, that's going to trump everything. That's going to require a supermajority vote, two-thirds of, of five people or four fifths. It's just if you're going to vote that up, you can also approve the zoning map amendment at this time, contingent upon comprehensive plan approval by the Met Council. Or if you're going to go the other way, you can just say they're both dead.
If you are to, I think Jay and I have been chatting about this, if you are to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation for denial, you, you would make a motion for denial and then direct staff to bring findings of fact back for approval at the next meeting? Does that sound good, Jay?
Yeah, and you also have to state on the record your reasons. Say, for example, it was a three to five votes, so we didn't get the supermajority. Those who did not vote for approval would have to state their reasons on the record and then we bring back resolution at the next meeting that's in line with what you said was your reason on the record.
All right. So Jay, can you clarify, do we need to vote on the zoning map amendment tonight? Because the comp plan adjustment is all that the Met Council would need, correct?
Right.
Wouldn't that simplify the procedure for tonight?
I mean, the, I would suggest that you just do them both at the same time, you know, make it contingent. We have, you know, sixty-day rule issues with both of them, but the, the comp plan amendment one gets extended because we have to go through the Met Council. But I guess I'm not real worried about that. But I, in most of all the other cities, if you, if you've got two live applications in front of you and granted, the comp plan is going to trump whatever happens, usually just vote, vote them both up or vote them both down.
All right.
Just a point of clarification. And one of the speakers said that in the Planning Commission, it was tabled. And then, and then now we're saying it was voted down.
It was voted down.
So the final decision from the Planning Commission, it was voted down. Thank you.
Donovan, can you explain the hundred and eighty-four acres and how the city actually requested that it was expanded? It was not the applicant?
Sure, sure. I understand that that adds some confusion to the process. I, I had some more conversations with the applicant and partly it's because during the Plan Commission, you know, deliberations, it appeared that they were looking for more, they wanted more, you know, neighborhood, neighborhood feedback. Also, I basically put the question to myself, what would, you know, what would I approve? And I looked at a more comprehensive view, something that related to not simply having a road as the boundary between, as a, as a municipal land boundary. Also, what would be comprehensive in nature? And it seemed natural to, to look at the southern boundary of Tanner's Brook as one of the, is the, is the boundary and then Highway sixty-one and then the western boundary of the applicant's property. And so is upon that, that I recommend Caleb that he expand. It also with that would be recommendation, staff recommendation to expand the, be proactive about the water infrastructure, have the city deliberate, you know, consider expanding. This was the concern that the private wells would, in the long run, maybe not be in the city's interest, given the aquifer that they would have to tap into might be the same one that the city might have to tap into in the future. So it, it was, I know it looks like a confusing process, but it was an attempt to kind of treat it more comprehensively so that the Plan Commission could get an approval there. At that time, also, I, reading the Met Council rules, it said, it said specifically that a Plan Commission approval was needed. And after a couple of months, we asked them again, say, you know, was, is it a Plan Commission approval or is it a recommendation? And the answer came back, a recommendation. And so at that point, kind of presented before a Plan Commission, what do you think? Would, would you go for a hundred and eighty-four acre or the fourteen acre option? And then they, they voted, made a motion for the fourteen acre option.
But in essence, the hundred and eighty-four acres really confused the whole process because it, it brought in people's property who had nothing to do with this whole thing. But the city ultimately made the recommendation that, that the applicant do that. Second, the water issue. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the city sent something out to the neighbors saying that they may be assessed for water. Is that correct?
No, I consider that, I didn't, no, I, it would have been me. I didn't send anything out to the neighbors. I said that was, that would be a possibility with either assessments or bonding or
But the city put it out, sent it out with the normal notice for a Plan and Commission meeting that there may be somehow that they, the residents of that area may have to pay for water. Is that correct?
It was in my staff report that that would, might be a way to fund that infrastructure expansion.
So the city put that out. It was not the applicant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we clarify this because, you know, I, I'm perfectly fine with sending this to the Met Council to at least get some definition on this as to whether they would approve it or not. We still have plenty of time to amend what the application, the final application would be. And yes, I agree with all of you, we have to address the infrastructure. That is one hundred percent agreed. And if we're not going to be able to do it, then, then the project shouldn't go forward. But the city is the one that created the issues here by asking them to expand beyond their property onto other people's property and to send something out that they may be assessed potentially for the water. And that's not what the applicant said. So I just want to make sure that that was clear. That's all I have, Mayor.
I kind of want to expand on that because in our original conversations with the Gendy Properties, it was indicated that there would be no expense to any other residents. And was the developer also going to be redoing One Ninetieth and storm sewers and other things along there?
That's, those are decisions usually made during, you know, during the planning process.
Without cost to any of the other residents?
Yeah, that we would, no doubt, if not have it developer build the road, you know, take money in escrow for the future construction of a, you know, city, road to city standards. There would be the collector road, at least along the, the front edge of the property.
Okay. I have heard a lot of confusion about this and I think the city is, is really confused this whole thing. And through this whole process, the only question was, can we get it to the Met Council? I mean, the whole water issue and bringing it up to a hundred and eighty acres, everything else, the spot zoning, the this, the that. You know, we're talking about building, I, I don't know, ten, twelve, fifteen houses next to a golf course. And if you ask what's the best use for a piece of property, in my opinion, I think that's a great use for that piece of property. I don't think that that's ever going to change, no matter what our comp plan is, anything else. We're next to a golf course and some upper level homes, great applicant, use for it anyway.
Members, council, I just want to speak to a couple of things here. You know, there's a lot of ways you can handle planning applications. One is, you know, the developer can simply come in, present what they want to have voted on and, and you can move on from there. And in that case, ultimately, that's what happened. You know, the Planning Commission did vote on the, the smaller acreage. The Planning Commission, I think, took the totality of that request in when they evaluated that issue. Where we started, you know, going through this evolution really was when there was some concerns about that initial application that was presented to the Planning Commission and what are some of the types of things that can be done to allay those concerns? That's where the infrastructure discussion came in. I think you heard earlier, that was a driver in the Planning Commission's discussion on this issue. You had other factors come in about, you know, think if you will, if you have a dozen of these comprehensive plan amendments that would come forward kind of on an isolated basis like this. Now, one thing I'll concede to this particular application is that it is in a situation where not a lot of parcels are going to be situated the same way because of the access to the sewer. So that is a differentiating factor for this parcel compared to a number of other parcels. But likewise, when you're looking at a comprehensive plan amendment, when you're looking at even establishment of zoning in an area, you want some continuity to it. You don't want to create, you know, these sort of disparate pieces of property that are isolated and not compatible with what's going on with the adjacent land uses. So as the application went through its evolution, I think a lot of these discussion points, whether it be how do you pay for this infrastructure, streets, roads, utilities? Is it a more comprehensive application, which realistically, when, when this was done initially, you really, you either should have pulled this up north of Hundred Ninetieth and left the Hundred Ninetieth kind of, you know, in agricultural zoning or you should have went somewhere south of Hundred Ninetieth. I mean, our original comp plan really didn't get this area right because you don't extend urban services into an area on half of the street. And just using, as we go through our next iteration of a comp plan, using streets are convenient, but they don't make sense from a development perspective. You, you need to reach in to the other side. So it's just a, a lot of factors here, but I, I mean, ultimately, I think, you know, you have the Planning Commission's recommendation. You're here this evening. You have the opportunity to either affirm their, their recommendation for denial, direct staff to produce some findings for your next meeting or to approve the comp plan amendment, I think, as Jay said, on a four-fifths vote and have that forwarded on to the Met Council and then it could proceed, you know, on with its next steps. you know, on with its next steps.
So how did we get a golf course put in there if it isn't zoned for it there?
You know, a golf course isn't a residential use. They don't necessarily have, you know, the sewer and water requirements, and so, you know, is that a, is that a compatible use? I mean, that probably predated city zone. I mean, it's, it's hard to say how that happened. I mean, different, different set of zoning, township zoning at the time. I, I can't speak to that, to be honest with you.
So I just want to be crystal clear on how far the Musa line is moving from current to proposed. Can you pull up a map just to see that?
Yeah, so this is the, the current Musa boundary. And then, you know, with...
That's very difficult to see.
Larger there for you. So that's the hundred Ninetieth there, and here's Highway sixty-one. And what is proposed is, this would be the, basically the future land use plan. The current one is here, and then the proposed would be here with that red, that red kind of zigzag. And then similarly for the zoning map, it'd be a yellow, a yellow identified parcel south of one Ninetieth there.
So the only thing we're doing to change the Musa line is to zigzag around the property?
Correct.
Okay. If jumping, so I ask a crystal ball question, which is a little dangerous, but we are in the, we are in the middle of evaluating our comp plan right now. Is there any scenario, or is it, is it reasonable to expect that under that new comp plan that we will be asked to pass in the next eighteen months, that we would be asking to extend that anyway? And to correct what I think, you know, what, what Aaron just mentioned was kind of a deficiency in the current plan? Is that, is that reasonable to assume that in eighteen months we're going to be doing this anyway? And that this is really a timing difference?
It's, I believe that's a reasonable assumption. I mean, it's preliminary to say where it'll go, but as council has discussed this in, you know, past months, I think it's reasonable to expect there will be a Musa line expansion. This area does make sense in some ways because of its proximity to Highway sixty-one, and that would, so I can imagine that heading south in this area compared to some other areas, but again...
And Hugo is bringing their Musa line up to one Eightieth?
It is currently up to one Eightieth.
Theirs is already to one Eightieth.
Yes.
So it would make sense that we would just bring ours down to one Eightieth along that entire band.
From an economic perspective, you know, you, we should be focused on growing to the south. I mean, most communities grow the north in the metro here. I mean, they're kind of expanding out away from the sewer, but we're kind of growing into the sewer. It's just the uniqueness of Forest Lake. But in this case, your cheapest infrastructure, your cheapest ability to extend sewer is off the main interceptor sewer line. So if you think about, you know, how you should grow from just a cost perspective, linear along that sewer corridor is, is where it's at. That's your cheapest infrastructure right there, assuming we get water out there. I mean, but, you know, you're going to have to do that at some point, but that, that's where it's at. That's your, that's your cost effective development.
Assuming we pass this tonight and the Met Council goes ahead with granting sewer hookup, what does that do to the other property owners that are along that same corridor in the future? Will they then also have to hook up the Met? Or can they, want to build one house, can you still put a well in?
It doesn't, there's no direct change to those properties. This is, the way the application is structured is simply this one fourteen acre parcel. I mean, if they wanted to connect, they would have to actually go through a similar process. I mean, the Musa line boundary is the boundary, and the municipal, you know, city sewer can't extend beyond that. And, you know, every time, even with the platted, like the headwaters area, if there's a new addition that goes in, there actually is, it's a, it's not to this extent of a, you know, comprehensive plan amendment, but there's still a sewer application to extend it. But any, it's maybe more detail than you need, but basically, anyone else wanting to get, hook up to city sewer would have to go through this process until, you know, there wasn't a future change, maybe the comp plan amendment would bring everyone in. But as far as, you know, there's been a conversation around residential tax assessments. Do they change with the zoning? No, they do not, even if they were a part of this. It's essentially a different color on the map. And, and so this, you know, the one property is, is, is the property that, that, you know, Mr. Smith's property is the property that's, that will have the change.
The new comp plan gets, we're required to pass that by December twenty eighteen, is that correct?
Correct.
And then is that effective immediately? There's not a gap period of effectiveness?
No, that is the comprehensive plan, so that's the, the guiding plan. Then, then the city council comes back and we actually do a comprehensive rezoning. So looking at the zoning, zoning text and zoning map to make sure that the comprehensive plan and the local controls, the map and the text are consistent.
So the plan gets approved by December of twenty eighteen, and then the actual Musa line gets moved after that through further council action? I'm just trying to understand how, how much we're speeding up the clock on moving that Musa line by taking action tonight.
Yeah, this, well, the, the deadline for submittal to Met Council is December twenty eighteen. I, we may or may not get there where we submit it earlier and then have that decision by twenty eighteen, because the Met Council does their review. But then it comes back and the, and the city formally adopts it. But that still doesn't change the zoning map. So, I mean, it, Musa lot, boundary, I think, would be expanded. I mean, there's some technical point there I may be missing, but essentially the zoning map still needs to change.
Zoning's independent.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So along those lines, if we're taking this, if we, why the, why just the specific move of the Musa line just around this property? Why not a, not, not a broader zoning change, but why not a larger change to the Musa line to, you know, foresee anything else that might come up in that, in that gap period? I mean, this does, I mean, just on the map, looks like it's specific to a spot, to a zone. It's not a comprehensive change, which, and I'm being sensitive to the difference between the zoning change and the Musa line change. Why, why would this be the amendment?
Well, I mean, the simple answer is that this is the application. The broader answer is, you know, where, I was looking at a different take on it, the hundred and eighty acre, hundred and eighty-four acre choice, option, thinking about it more comprehensive. I mean, I think, you know, I'll concede to council member Freer that it was a clumsy effort, but that's the idea was to make it, well, basically, if we're going to have this conversation, let's have it in a more comprehensive way. But, but before us, you know, before city council this evening is, is this application, this is, you know, this is the subject property.
I, I think that maybe clarify your question a little bit more. The Musa line and that portion has to be done through the Met Council.
Agreed.
Zoning is something we do.
Yep, I agree.
So, you know, why are we dealing this instead of that? We got to get the one before we do the other.
Mr. Mayor and council members, it's, it's my understanding that what's before us tonight is what was applied for. And if you go ahead and approve a comp plan amendment for this fourteen acres and a zoning, rezoning contingent upon the Met Council, and then the Met Council goes ahead and approves that comp plan amendment, I mean, you're not spot zoning, you, you rezoned and reguided your property. So we have the power to do it or not do it.
Go ahead, Ed. The actual hookup to the Met or the sewer line, the developer incurs all cost?
Thank you for asking that. It was on my list, too.
Yes. And there's actually, I mean, there's still a formal process. I mean, the Met Council board may say, yes, this comprehensive plan amendment, but then it's actually an engineering decision. Can the applicant actually tap into that, that line on a hundred Ninetieth? So there's, I mean, I have a process lined out there, but there are other, there's other details, you know, nuances to it.
And that's all done at the applicant's expense, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, and the actual, the sewer plan does show, you know, that's been adopted by the city a number of years ago. Let me get this, sorry. I had, I thought I had a copy of it here. Does show the, yeah, here we go. It does show a line running down, you know, sewer line running down a hundred Ninetieth. So, I mean, this is not, this is not something that the city hasn't contemplated in the future. Oh, sorry. This line right here, a hundred Ninetieth, here's the interceptor sewer line. So this is, I mean, this is not, you know, this has been, you know, part of the, a broader plan. It's just earlier than we expected.
That line that would be put in to accommodate eighteen homes, would that accommodate future use? I mean, would we have to redo that line again when more properties require sewer?
No, it's, yeah, Commissioner, I, as part of the construction of that, this, this, the city would actually pay for the developer to oversize it so that it would be able to serve all the properties it, you know, intends to.
What's that?
So there is a cost to the city on this project?
It would be more of a credit. I mean, actually, not, not a cash outlay. But the, there are other, there are other costs, too, that, you know, that the developer pays with water area charges, hookup charges and whatnot. And so, you know, but for, basically, the, and Senior Engineer Goodman could explain this in more detail, but essentially, the city does know that there needs to be a pipe in there, and they construct it for the full build out, you know, to its, the proper depth and every, you know, and size. And so...
I mean, if the, let's just say the city sewer charges were going to be twenty thousand and because the oversize, there'd be more than that probably, but, you know, the oversizing would, they might get credit for ten thousand. There's calculation Ryan will do, and, you know, it reflects the oversizing of the pipe to accommodate other development. I expect another, once we get to the next level of discussion, you know, from a plating perspective, one of the discussion points has been how do we treat water on this? And I think we've talked about requiring the developer at least to sleeve in water lines, even though they are not necessarily going to hook into them initially, but when water is extended, then they have the opportunity to connect the houses in and all that. The question from a policy perspective, given this isn't something we typically deal with, do we require them to pay a water excess charge at that time? Or do we do that at the time of connection? You can imagine, let's say, ten years from now, water comes in the area, we come by and say, hey, we got a great deal for you, we're going to hook you up to water, and why don't you give us whatever the current water connection charge is? I don't know what that is, Ryan. What is it right now?
The WAC is eighteen hundred.
So you can foresee if it's not dealt with on the front end, you can see a foreseeable conflict, you know, with that in the future when it's time to connect. You know, people hopefully are making that connection to their house, the service connection right away, so you're not having to deal with existing yards and utilities. But it's just something we've got to think about a little differently because that initial connection won't be made.
It's for, for the discussion later on down the road, the way I see it, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I just want to point out, too, that the city has the power to make property owners connect to sanitary sewer, but if you had your well in the backyard and then there was water available up in the front, you don't really have the authority, at least according to our research, to make somebody connect to city water. Say they didn't want to redo their well, they could pay for a service pipe to go in there, but someone could say, I don't want to drink that water with fluoride in it, it's going to make bad things happen to me. So you can make people hook up to sanitary sewer, but you can't always make them hook up to water unless there was some safety problem going on, but...
Can you, can you charge them for the water, the work? As an assessment, because you're putting water through there?
They would put the, the piping would be at their expense as part of the original development. It's just the, do they pay...
Even though they weren't getting water, they'd be charged? Is that correct?
They would, and the idea is that they would have the pipe in place, the ability to connect it. The question would be is, do they pay the water excess charge that we charge people when they connect to the system now or later?
And whose decision is that?
This is the kind of thing we're, that's why I said we have to work through it. I mean, all these development agreements, there's always some uniqueness to each one, and we have to negotiate those specific terms within the development agreement, improvement agreement that we negotiate with them.
But that's for the new development. For existing homes, what, what happens to them?
Existing homes, like as Jay mentioned, you know, they're, they're not necessarily required to opt into water if...
Would they be assessed in any way?
I mean, if you bring water in front of a piece of property and then we can find an appraiser that says, says that property went up in value, then we can sustain an assessment if we do a four twenty-nine project. If water is in front of the piece of property and the person doesn't want to hook up and just wants to use their well, I wouldn't suggest trying to collect a connection fee because there's no connection.
Any further discussion? Look for a motion? Are we going to do this as one motion or two?
I think most probably two.
Yeah, you would, you would want to do the, the comp plan first because that's going to decide.
I'll make a motion that can move forward with the comp plan amendment presented. I'll have the applicant to present this to the Met Council.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? I'll second that for further discussion. I'll open this up for discussion now.
So I'll go first. So as it relates to moving, I think we have a unique set of circumstances as it relates to moving the Musa line. And moving a line, the short distance that's being proposed, that in and of itself, I don't have a problem with pushing that forward to the Met Council. I have broader concerns about this project, however, and in moving it forward to the Met Council, I'm concerned with just being incredibly myopic with a lot of the longer term challenges that this project is going to have. We don't have a current plan to get city water to that current location. We have questions around where a future city well will be located in the city of Forest Lake, and it's quite possible that we will now have twelve to eighteen individual wells being drilled in an area that potentially could be a Duismu area in the future. And we just passed an ordinance prohibiting those wells in the Duismu area, so I've got that concern. A hundred and Ninetieth is not in good shape. We don't have a long-term road plan there. So in my opinion, it goes beyond just tonight moving the line. We couldn't pass to move the line and ask the Met Council to make that approval, but there is a, a series of really big, potentially really big discussion items and big ticket items that need to be made and discussions need to be made in very, very short order that I have some overall concerns about, and I think has been appropriately voiced by Planning Commission. And there's certainly many hurdles to be cleared regardless of what we do tonight on the Musa line.
All right. The Duismu and future well, where have we identified that next well to be put in?
That complete process hasn't been completed at this point. There's going to be a lot of exploratory work that would have to be completed as part of that. We've done obviously some modeling, we have some ideas where we could site a future water tower. Obviously, what's going on with White Bear Lake and that whole situation, DNR's kind of closed the doors on what we're talking about, and we're going to be dealing with that for a while. We know that our existing wells are in the Mount Simon, there's a moratorium on the Mount Simon. We know that the Prairie de Shane, Jordan Aquifer, that the aquifers of concern are in White Bear Lake, don't really exist in this area because of the fractured ground or layers of ground in the area. So potentially, we have to do some test wells to see what capacity we would be getting. Obviously, we would still try to work towards the Mount Simon as an ultimate well, but there's just no guarantee, there's no answers. We know, though, that we would like to segregate our infrastructure in the event of natural disasters. We've got sufficient supply in the north, in the middle. It only is likely that you're going to build something in the south, would include future wells, treatment plant, tower. tower. Uh, there is some nice high land in this area, uh, to the east that would be a great spot for potential tower and stuff like that, so you want in event to keep your infrastructure close to, uh, but, you know, as development keeps extending and expanding, you know, we've been extending, uh, or in the Headwaters Parkway, you have a sixteen-inch line that started up part of that development and working south along with twelve-inch down Fenway, and that's kind of what's leading to some of that major infrastructure someday along those corridors, you, you, how you could kind of zero it in, so, uh, but then that area that Aquifer would have to be hydrologically modeled, which hasn't been to the point and the level that in our current Duismu areas have been. As technology has improved, you just saw on your last well had protection plans, that Duismu area was able to shrink quite a bit. Uh, depending on what Aquifer we go in with, the new future wells, that's all going to depend on the boundary of that Duismu area too, so there's just simply a lot of things that aren't known at this time until infrastructure is ready to be hooked up in specific spots and the geology is studied accordingly, so.
In the Duismu, which is our drinking water supply area or management area, is that a thousand feet from the well? Is that what typically is?
Completely related to the hydrology of the, the analysis completed, so.
And our two current wells, approximate area from them?
Uh, absolutely. I don't know distance off the top of my head.
Okay.
It, it varies significantly around the border, it's just not a perfect shape, uh, but.
And the, uh, the Mount Simon Aquifer we're pulling from now is how deep?
Our wells are six fifteen to six twenty-five in depth.
Okay.
Six hundred.
Typical residential well is?
That'll depend on where they're at, some drift wells might be seventy-five feet to one fifty. Uh, the Jordan Aquifer and our Prairie de Shane down in the Hugo White Bear Lake area are in two fifty, three hundred.
Any other questions?
We're still in discussion, right?
We are, yeah.
And according to our attorney, a no vote would require an explanation of why we're voting no, is that correct?
Yeah, I started to write down also some of the issues if we, if we go there, but if we don't have a four-fifths vote, then I would ask that those members that did not vote for it, um, and were on the winning side of the losing vote, according to the sixty-day rule, need to state on the record the, um-
So, that statement is taken after the vote?
Right.
Okay.
I need clarification. I thought, I thought the zoning map amendment needed four fifths, not the comp plan portion.
Comp plan, the only time you need a four-fifths on a zoning, if you're going from like residential to industrial or-
Correct, which means this, the motion that I made would only require a three-fifths vote.
No, the comp plan needs four, the rezoning needs three. Comp plan needs a supermajority. Two-thirds of the council, which is four fifths.
All right.
Yeah, just for reference, the Duismu areas are up on your screen now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Dan, can we get a roll call vote?
Yeah, Councilmember Bain.
No.
Councilmember Husnick.
No.
Councilmember Eiger.
No.
Councilmember Freer.
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Winnick.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Then I would, I just recommend that each of you, um, take some time and state on the record what your reasons were for voting no. And then I'm going to take that information and then come back with a resolution that mimics that.
Does who know that those voted no or all of us?
Just the no votes.
Okay.
Fourteen acres is not a comprehensive plan and overall concerns with future viability of the project, given city's ability to, um, support infrastructure, both highway or street as well as, um, water.
My reasons for voting no are, again, we, I think we have a valid comp plan now that doesn't, doesn't need to be changed at the present time. I know it's coming up for change. I believe this is a good project that's ahead of its time, and I believe that as we expand to the south and that infrastructure is put in place, that would be the time for this kind of project. Uh, I don't like the thought, even though we're saying it's not leapfrogging, it's eighteen homes that are getting a benefit, so to me it is. I mean, it's spot zoning to me. I may not qualify as the exact definition of spot zoning, but I look at it as it is. Uh, the other reasons are the taxpayers that are in that area, and some of them came forward, have been paying taxes for thirty years, they enjoy the, the reason they live there now, the large expanse, the agricultural, the ten acres and not less than that, and they're not getting much for their tax spending right now, they're not getting roads, they're not getting anything, and to take away some of the things that you do enjoy, I think it's wrong. And then lastly, the, there is going to be some cost to the city that's going to be incurred, whether it's in the form of credit or not, and I think we just have development that should be done sooner and more in a progressive, as Aaron put it, developing from the city south, not from that end up. So, those are my reasons.
My, uh, main reason is because of the, uh, turn, turn in some amount of work that the Planning Commission worked, uh, people have done on this thing, and, uh, they came up with a seven to one vote, and, uh, I, we need to honor what they've been doing. It's, I think they did a very thorough and a very comprehensive job on this thing. Also, I, um, I agree with residents, I mean, that we, they're the ones that are going to be affected by this thing, no matter what the cost or whatever happens there, because it was going to increase traffic, and, uh, uh, it's been kind of a rural thing for a long time, and I think we're just a little bit premature in bringing that, that, uh, Musa line that far at the moment, so. And I do agree with Ed on this, there's going to be some city costs involved also. And, uh, I don't think you could have a, a really good, um, residential area, they want some really great streets and a good highway getting back onto Highway sixty-one, which is going to be very expensive, so I just don't think now is the time for that particular project.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'd, I'd recommend though you also have an application to rezone in front of you, and you might want to make a motion to deny that because the comp plan didn't change, and you can't legally rezone a property that inconsistent with your comp plan, so. I think you want to go down that road. We have a live application in front of us, but usually you would deny it based, because the comp plan did not pass.
Before we do that, Chicago two, Minnesota zero.
Thank you.
So, we have, uh-
I would, I would actually disagree with you again. I don't think we have to vote on it. If the comp plan isn't being changed, then the application would fail.
Members of council, though, so if you, if you don't approve it within the, you know, the statutory timeframe, then it's as if approved, so you have to actually take some action on it.
Okay.
So, I will make a motion to deny the request for a zoning amendment.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, call for vote. All those in favor of denying the zoning amendment?
Aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
All right, four to one, that one fails. Okay, moving on. Dan, do you want to take us through seven B?
Yep. Uh, members of council, uh, what you have before you is a tobacco license for Cloud X Vape LLC. Um, the city of Forest Lake has actually received, uh, three separate applications.
We're having a meeting here, please. Go ahead, Dan.
Uh, three separate applications for the property here located at eight forty-three West Broadway. Um, two of those applications were made and withdrawn. Um, the first was made by William Shakinsky Jr., and that one was withdrawn before council considered it. The second one was made, um, by Ms. Hughes, and that was up for consideration at September twenty-fifth council meeting. Um, at that meeting, that application was tabled. After that application was tabled, Ms. Hughes contacted city staff and requested that that application be pulled or withdrawn from consideration, which city staff did. She then resubmitted a third application, which is the application you have before you tonight. Um, after receiving this application, um, I reviewed it and also worked with Bridget Nason, the Assistant City Attorney, to review the, um, license application to make sure all the conditions of, um, city ordinances are met in the application. Um, based on my review and based on Bridget's review, um, we are recommending approval of the, um, tobacco license, uh, for Cloud X Vape, um, at eight forty-three West Broadway. At this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we're right in the process.
Dan, do we have any, um, stipulations or regulations recommended for this or, um-
At this point, the recommendation's approval. Um, based on the application materials that we received, um, we don't have any reason in that application at this point for denial. Um, they met the qualifications of city ordinance at this point.
All right. And do they have specific, do we have specific operating hours for, um, these types of businesses?
You know, that I don't off the top of my head with what the operating hours are, um, you know, per city code on that, I can review that and take a look at it. Um, one thing to be considered with this is I have communicated with Ms. Hughes that if there is any violations of city ordinance base, once the issue, license is issued, you know, we can, you know, revoke it based on what those, if there are recurring infractions on city code.
All right, go ahead.
I put Chief Peterson on the spot a little bit, and I'm not sure to the extent you're able to comment on the situation that occurred. Um, there was a, there was a police activity prior to opening on this property mid-September, um, I believe, that involved Jolene and one of our sergeants. Are we able, is, has that investigation concluded and has there been a resolution to that situation?
I am unsure on that. Captain Weiss, do you know?
No.
I, I don't know if that one has been considered or not, but when we actually viewed this application, that one's actually outside of this because-
That was the application that got pulled back.
Correct, yeah, so that one's outside of the scope of this application, so whatever.
Same property, however, correct?
Correct.
Is it same map again?
And same related parties involved with the lease?
Uh, on, when we looked at this application, the package that we received, the application materials, they're are separate, you know, granted the fact that the infraction happened at the property, um, but the applicant themselves was not a party of that, so that's why we could not consider that when we consider this license application, we had to view them as separate issues, which is what we did when we did this application.
Could still be construed as strength of management and ability to control the property. A, a illegal opening is an illegal opening that I think reflects poorly on any, anybody associated with the business.
We, I mean, I did discuss that with Bridget, you know, and at that time it was, we needed to separate the issues basically, and we view the applications as standalone applications, and when we got to this point with this one, this is why, you know, based on the application as presented, the background checked, all the reviews that we did, you know, that's why I start, that's why I'm making a recommendation to approve the license, but your concern was, you know, we did discuss it.
So, one of the criteria, I'm sorry, um, Bridget's memo outlines the criteria, uh, criteria for denying an application, um, and of course, on the spot. I'm not finding it. Here we go. Um, so, I just want to make sure I understand the criteria to deny. One of the criteria is conviction of certain crimes, um, and then the other criteria would be to constitute a menace to the health, safety and welfare of the public or other good cause. And it's that second criteria that I might be looking towards as reason to deny of, you have a property that is looking for licensure that has had activity that, um, opening prior to having your license in place, um, doesn't do anything to help the health, safety and welfare of citizens of Forest Lake.
Right, and, and again, if you look at the actual application, the applicant themselves did not, was not a participant of that. Granted, it happened at the location, but the actual applicant as presented this evening was not a party to that, so that's where that came from, and I, you know.
So, help me to understand, um, so help me to understand how we, step back a second, how we treat like for perhaps sale to minors, where it's not the actual license holder who sold tobacco to minors or sold alcohol to minors, but it is somebody that works under that employment. How do we, how do those two things relate, relate when it comes to licensing?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, and, um, some of the conversations we've had before is, you know, say for example, you had one family member that, um, got convicted or, you know, sold illegally, could another family member come in and apply for a license and operate a legitimate, proper establishment? Yes, so what we're looking at right now is we have an application by, I believe it is the grandmother, and we don't have a whole lot to point to her to say that, and it's, it's always difficult legally to, um, show that someone's a menace to health, safety and welfare of the public and other good cause, even just with, you know, maybe their association with another family member that's, um, done some bad things, so.
Members of council, maybe a few mitigating considerations here. One, I don't know if Dan mentioned this, but this really is only until the end of the year, right?
Correct, this would be up for renewal.
And so, we are, you know, in a fairly short period here where, you know, you have a renewal situation and the licenses then are, of course, evaluated at that time again. Uh, clearly, since, you know, there's been some concerns, there's an ongoing process with the previous violation, um, this particular license holder, you know, is to be accountable for the activities that will happen on the premises, and, you know, they are assuming, you know, that, and that's not an insignificant responsibility on their part, and so, you know, hopefully they have the confidence, you know, that things are going to go well there, and if they don't ultimately, uh, you know, we, we will be, you know, monitoring compliance and, uh, you know, paying attention to this in order to, uh, make sure that we have, you know, lawful activity happening on the premises, and I think that's really all we can, can, you know, promise at this point in time.
All right, uh, one second, did you want to- The only question I had is, and I don't know if you can even divulge the information, but are any of the people that were involved in the previous, I don't know if we want to call it a crime, but will they be working? I mean, are these family members or, maybe we can't talk about it.
That's, that's at the discretion of the license holder, which I believe they're here to talk to you.
Yeah, if you can state your name first and then go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff. My name is Patrick Doran, I'm an attorney at Miller and Stevens, just up the street here. I represent Ms. Hughes as well as Mr. Shasinski, who is mentioned indirectly in some of these memos, I believe what the council is alluding to, uh, and some activity that, uh, happened prior to Ms. Hughes's involvement as well as, uh, these applications that were submitted. I'll make a few general statements here, just very, very briefly at the beginning, and then certainly am willing to answer any questions, as I believe is Ms. Hughes is willing to answer any questions that the council or other staff members may have. Uh, first and foremost, as Mr. Undem has, uh, stated and, and the city attorney has somewhat alluded to, Ms. Hughes is the applicant here, she submitted an application in full. Uh, she has passed the background checked, as Ms. Nason's memo to the city council stated. What's here before the council is Ms. Hughes' application and not anybody else's application. And I understand council member Bain's concern about management at the facility in regards to, uh, some previous quote-unquote criminal activity, certainly, as a fine citizen of this nation, you're innocent until proven guilty, there has been no conviction related to any sort of criminal activity at this, um, at this particular location, and, and certainly, I know the aggrieved party is going to fight that to the bitter end. Uh, in terms of management at this facility, I think- In terms of management at this facility, I think council should be happy that another person is here to take responsibility for the actions at this store. You know, of course, this, this is going to be a storefront to brick and mortar in Forest Lake. It's going to hire Forest Lake citizens. It's going to pay Forest Lake taxes, so there is going to be a benefit to the city here. Like I said, this comes down to what city code 118 says is required for an applicant. There is nothing in Ms. Hughes's application that would prohibit her from obtaining an application. So that's, that's the number one reason why this council should follow staff recommendation and approve, because there's no reason not to. And again, I understand Ms. Bain's concern, and Ms. Hughes is here. The second point I want to make, and equally as important, is she's willing to and will take full responsibility for the actions at that store. Of course, Mr. Shasinski is involved. That's not a secret here. He has applied and been, applied for and gained an application from the city of Minnetonka to open another store, and that his expertise in this field will certainly help this business be successful. People make mistakes, you know, and I'm not talking in any specific instance, but we're all, you know, we all should be afforded the opportunity to be a functioning member of this society, to be a business owner, to be an employee. And I don't think, based on this application and what's in front of you today, there should be any reason to deny Ms. Hughes the opportunity to do that. You know, of course, her as a private business owner, she can hire really anybody who she believes is fit, whether that person's an ex-con, is a felon, whatever, you know, she sees fit, she can hire that person. I'm not saying she's going to, but I'm saying that's what this country affords us to be able to do, to, as a private citizen, to hire whoever she wants. And again, I just want to make a point that Mr. Shasinski will be spearheading that Minnetonka location, excuse me, and not necessarily full-time here at that Forest, the Forest Lake location. And then lastly, as Mr. Undem, and to some extent, Mr. Parrish mentioned, there's recourse here for the city. If there's any issues with this property, it can suspend, it can revoke, it can fail to renew at the end of the year. You know, there's almost sort of a built-in probationary period here to where if everything goes smoothly, the council can feel just that much more comfortable come the new year. So of course, I'm up here recommending that and hoping that the council will follow the staff recommendation and approve this application. Welcome. Any questions? Ms. Hughes is also welcome to answer any questions.
I don't have a question. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the tobacco license for Cloud X Vape LLC, based on the applicant itself is, has passed the background check. The city has no legal recourse to say no. Do I have reservations? Yes, I do. I really do. But you've done everything that was required to, to have the license, and I don't even know why we're having the discussion, and frankly, this should have been on the consent agenda. So with that, I move, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, council members.
Thank you.
All right. Police officer hiring.
That's you, Dan, or the chief?
I'll take the lead. If there's any questions, we can refer to Chief Peterson. Mayor, Mayor members of council, we have before you tonight is the results of the recent recruitment process the city underwent for the three vacancies currently within the City of Forest Lake Police Department. These vacancies occurred when officers have left to either return to the private sector or take a position with the different departments. Based on the, the application pool that we, we received, we ran them through numerous testing, numerous rounds of interviews, and as a result of that, these candidates that are before you tonight were gone through additional backgrounding, medical evaluation, and psychological evaluation. They did pass all of these testing and are being recommended tonight as hires for the City of Forest Lake Police Department. The first candidate that's being recommended is Joshua Brown. Joshua currently has two years' experience working as an officer for the Wyoming Police Department. In addition to working as a patrol officer for the City of Wyoming, Josh is also a SWAT operator for the Chicago County Sheriff's Office and is currently a use-of-force instructor. The second applicant is Ashley Glenn, and Ashley is currently working with the City of Woodbury as a community service officer, where she has served since early 2017. She is also serves in the Army National Guard, where she's a military police officer and a riot control instructor. And the third applicant that's being recommended is Thomas Colter. Thomas currently works for the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Department, where he has served for the past 22 years. While working for the Blue Earth Sheriff's Office, he has worked as an SRO, he's worked on the Water Patrol as a field training officer, and has been the regional grant coordinator for the departments toward zero death program. It is recommendation of staff for the hiring of Joshua Brown, Ashley Glenn, and Thomas Colter at the following grades below. First one is Thomas, Joshua Brown, who's a lateral candidate. Have him come in at step two. Ashley Glenn, which would be step one, and Thomas Colter, who is as well a lateral candidate at step three. And the anticipated start dates for the candidates was the last week of October. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the process or the candidates.
Yeah, Dan, can you, can you tell me what city council meeting that was approved to hire the third officer at?
So, Mayor, members of council, one, we traditionally do not get approval on positions that are budgeted. I do believe we sent an email out that spoke to the effect that we did have a resignation and that we were proceeding with the recruitment based on the existing pool. It just so happened that we were within, you know, an active recruitment process. Really great candidates too, by the way. It was a great process, a little bit different than what we've done in the past, and I think overall, you know, just in talking to Chief Peterson, you know, and the feedback we got from the background investigators, as well as people that did the, the different evaluations, they, they were really complimentary of the candidates we brought forward. And so it really, really was done that way. And then ultimately here, of course, this evening, you're being asked to consider the recommendations.
So in other words, there wasn't a request of the council to hire a third candidate, whether there was for the first two candidates?
Mayor, members of council, I'll be honest, I don't 100% recollect, but of course, you know, we were coming out of a fairly significant discussion on contract law enforcement at that time. We had had some fairly long-term vacancies at that point, and I think just that was probably more unusual than usual compared to what we've done in the past. It was just a situation where I think we just wanted the, you know, some indication of support that that was acceptable from the council's perspective.
And I don't, I don't, my point on this is not that I disagree with the third hire. My point is that there was no request, even though this, this became an issue with a third vacancy, if you will, if you want to call it an issue, in early September, and that that wasn't brought forward. I have no issue with hiring all three, but I want to make sure that we point out that you brought it forward for the first two, and that there was never any discussion on the third one, which I don't think is a good idea. So I just want to point that out, but I have no problem with hiring all three.
So members of council, we're happy to, you know, discuss how we do that in the future, just to do it in a way that meets your expectations. I, I think if I recall, I sent an email. If anyone has a concern with us moving ahead with that, you know, we can certainly talk about it, but we can adopt a position where we get authorization to proceed with recruitment formally, or revert back to what we, I guess we have currently been operating under, which is, you know, if it's a budgeted position, we move forward with, with recruitment and then bring a recommendation to the council, but we're happy to do it how you like.
My point is, with as public as the discussion was previously, we should have made sure that this was public, that we were hiring the third officer, because I think that shows support for the, the police department and the community, and that's why I'm kind of upset that we didn't actually do that. Yes, you're correct, you did send an email, but I did expect it was going to come back to the council prior to that, so.
I apologize. I'll, I'll accept responsibility for that.
And I think in the future, it should be council authorization before the process begins. Dan, how do, in this hiring process, can you speak about factors with, you know, diversity and reflecting the community?
In terms of the specific candidates that we have?
In the hiring process in general, I guess.
It becomes a lot to speak about the individual candidates, so let's speak about the process.
I mean, I guess when we did the, the part of the, the testing that the police officers did, they, they were filled out on the first written test background audit, so we do have it. I don't have it at my fingertips in terms of what the pool looked like in total, but we do, it was a diverse pool. I mean, we did have, you know, applicants from, representing multiple races that did apply for the position.
Members of council, our, our process is, is very comprehensive. I think Dan did a pretty, a pretty good job of summarizing it, just a couple of, you know, additional points. Well, one, I think, you know, there might be a policy discussion there, you know, if you have specific objectives, you know, that you want to have in the, in the future in terms of, you know, what, what your hiring objectives are, you know, we can certainly talk about that. Overall, though, we, we've got a pretty, a pretty good process initially. Of course, we, we received a good response here, which was understandably a potentially a concern, given the fact that we were coming out of a fairly, again, significant conversation on contract law enforcement, but I think we received, was it 100 applications?
Actually, I just looked it up. It was 135, 140.
135 applications, which, you know, comparatively speaking, you know, given what some communities are seeing, that's, that's pretty good. So we were encouraged by that. We did do a round of Wonderlic testing for a personality characteristics inventory. We did a cognitive assessment. We also did a standard, you know, written test that was focused more on law enforcement, you know, types of questions, physical agility. We did adjust the firm that we used for our psychological evaluation this time, based on someone recommended by the League of Minnesota Cities that really deals extensively in law enforcement. And I think we did three panel interviews, or?
Yeah, and there was a final one with me as well.
Yeah, and so I think we, you know, we had a lot of, I mean, you know, we, we look at this as one of the most important things we do. Obviously, we're trying to, you know, find people that are good fits for the, you know, the organization. In some cases, you know, we're potentially making a $3 million decision here, you know, over the course of potentially a 30-year career with the investment we make annually and just compensation, but also training, and so, you know, the, the process really is reflective of that, and, you know, again, we're, we're just feeling real fortunate that we have a really great group of people here that we're able to bring forward to you tonight.
And a couple, Chief, how involved are you in the process?
In this process and in prior processes, in this process was a little bit different. We incorporated the cognitive testing that we haven't utilized in prior police hirings. But for me, I was active pretty much near the end, so I wasn't real involved at the beginning. I didn't want any conflict of interest or anything like that. I, you know, you never know who's going to be putting in for the position. Prior positions for hiring processes, you know, you just want to keep yourself out of that loop at the beginning. At the end then, I was involved in a, an interview process. I was one of them on the board, and then also in the very final interview.
Okay. I, I got one more, and then we'll turn it over to the council. Given that you're going to have three brand-new hires coming in at one time, how are they going to fit into the shift in the rotation? Are we, we're not going to have three on one shift at all.
That's a really good question, because that's one of the discussions that we had a few weeks ago. So no, they will not be on the same shift, and we have a, our schedule is, is there's two different rotations and day and evening shift, and so they're going to actually be on three different shifts, two different rotations, three different shifts. And during the initial FTO process, which is the field training process, they will be together during the first week or two, because there's a lot of investment in regards to, you know, the range training, use-of-force training, a lot of time and energy and staff time when it comes to records management, going through policy review, those types of things. So technically, we have what we call a mini-academy, and that's where they're going to be together, but after that, then they'll be assigned to field training officers.
All right. Thank you. Mike, you have...
Captain, how much involvement did you have?
I was the same as the chief. We stayed back in the initial, this was, this was a new process to us. I liked it. Dan, probably Paul and Will, he ran a fantastic process with the getting of the applications. We didn't have to do any of that stuff, and normally they'll affirm we did that in the past, and allow us to, to get people through the process and then into the law enforcement sectors, you know.
I, I, one of the reasons I'm asking the question is because it's actually a better process to do it the way you guys just described it, where, for lack of a better term, the good old boy system doesn't necessarily get involved. So I give you guys credit for doing it a different way than you have in the past, and hopefully, you know, these three officers work out for, for the long term. So quick question about training for the two, we'll call experienced police officers versus the one who's kind of brand-new, coming from a community service officers. How are you going to make sure that they have the training? I mean, obviously, two of them are already serving as officers, so what is, how are they treated differently in training versus the other officer?
Well, it's, it's definitely an advantage for them, because they have some experience under the belt, but we also want to train them the Forest Lake way. You know, the Forest Lake Police Department early, but we definitely don't do anything like, oh, you already know what you're doing, so you're going to be out on the road in two weeks or three weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
Just a couple of quick questions. One, the rest of your officers, do they have any chance or any opportunity to talk to these candidates? Like, I know when Chief Newman was selected, the rest of the department did have input.
They, actually, we had a sergeant and two officers on one of the, on one of the interview boards, and they actually got to see quite a few of the candidates, and these three were, a few of them that were passed on to the second interview. So quite a few of them got to see these candidates.
So is it basically nine? There was three panels, right?
Yes.
So the first interview was a staff panel, but they rotated within three different panels, and so not the applicants, but a third went to each of the panels, and so I think it was nine or give or take, you know, sergeant and two officers on each of those panels, so that, they actually did provide the, the first review?
My second question is, how, how do you determine what requirements for the grades they come in at?
Well, it's actually a lateral pay, and what it is, is we look at their experience level, and for a lateral pay, we verify where they're sitting at their pay grade, not their pay grade, but where their salary or hourly rate might be at their, the department they're at now, and then bring them in very similar to where our step may be.
So it is strictly financial? It's not what grade they were at or anything like that?
It's, it's what their previous compensation was. It's benchmarked off of their previous hourly wage, but from a seniority perspective, they're, they come on, you know, basically in the order in which they're hired here, or their, their start date. So it, the, the lateral really is pay. It is not necessarily benefits and, and/or seniority and shift bidding and all that.
Only reason I mention that, if you'd have, you could have a candidate coming from a small police department that might have very high rank, but his pay wouldn't be comparable to, say, Forest Lake or Minneapolis or St. Paul, or is that pretty much that it is comparable in all the different?
No, you're right. It could be totally different. You know, our rate might be higher than someone in a, a small rural department, or they might be actually coming in, you know, a little lower as well, that, you know, from maybe another department that pays, pays more.
I was just looking at if you reflected into, you know, there might be leadership qualities, and maybe the person was a sergeant or something in a different police force, and then coming in, meshing into ours, if that entered into it, or if it's strictly, he's getting so much now, and which is going to bring him by the way across.
Strictly what they're getting now. During the application process, there was some areas where, that did come into play in regards to the scoring, in regards to, you know, not only experience, but education, what kind of trainings they have, those types of things.
Thank you.
Members of council, I think I said be or miss, and I apologize to him. I, he, he said hi to me out in the hallway, and I didn't recognize him, but we do have one of the candidates that's here this evening, Tom Colter, the, currently with the Blue Earth County Sheriff's Office, so Tom, Tom is here. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we go with the staff recommendations, that we hire Joshua Brown, Ashley Glenn, Glenn, I guess it is, and Tom Colter, as recommended by the staff, and... recommended by the staff. And I guess that's about it. Yeah.
Second.
Just for clarification on the motion, and that's at the salary grades recommended?
Say that again.
And that's at the salary recommended, that in the memo? Is that correct?
It's correct.
Thank you. Just making sure.
Staff recommendation.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? None. Call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the ACE hardware invoices.
Congratulations, Thomas.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. We have ACE hardware invoices. We'll look for a motion on that.
Mr. Mayor, make the motion to approve the ACE hardware invoices.
Second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain.
Yeah, one abstain. I'll abstain. Mr. Mayor, I make a, make a motion that we pay the Winnick supply invoices.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? None. Abstain? One. All right. Staff updates. Chief Newman?
Uh, next Saturday is our fire prevention open house. That runs from ten to one at, at Forest Lake Fire Station One. We invite everybody to the public, or we invite the public to attend. Starting today, we started visiting all the schools. We start with Columbus today. We'll hit Leela and Forest Lake Elementary, and St. Peter's Church, along with several different daycares in the community as well, discussing fire prevention and what kids can do to be safe. That's all I have for an update.
All right. Thank you.
Change your, change your batteries in the smoke detectors.
All right.
Correct.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Donovan?
Uh, no update, no updates at this time.
All right. Chief?
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I just have a few items for you. Number one, I just wanted to let you know that all Forest Lake police personnel were trained in the use and administering Narcan to individuals that have overdosed on heroin. Unfortunately, I'm sure you've heard about the opiate concerns statewide, but we have actually seen a sharp increase in Forest Lake as well. A very scary thing that's going on here. Our officers have been there with North Memorial paramedics when they've gone to an overdose. And we have seen and observed what Narcan can do and save lives. And now we're going to be carrying them in all of our squad cars, and we're going to have the ability to administer that. Secondly, we have two more Highway ninety-seven details that'll be coming up in the next few weeks. It sounds like even earlier during the open forum, a lot of people were mentioning Highway ninety-seven. I just want to let you know that we continue to, to work that area as much as we can. And hopefully, we're making a, making an impact. And then lastly, we had the Coffee for a Cop last Thursday, and a lot of kids and adults were in attendance. It went really well. And we're probably going to schedule another one in the next month or two.
All right. Thank you. A question on the Narcan. Is that something the SROs are going to have with them, or is it just in the squad car?
It'll actually be in the, in the squad cars. So technically, it will be with them, because they do have the patrol vehicles there. But it really is up to that officer if they want to keep it on them or not. We're still looking at the exact ones that we're going to be purchasing. But we can either have them in our first aid kits in the squad cars, or officer can choose to have it literally in their pocket.
All right. Thank you.
Just a question. Any update on the, when we'll get the signs up on North Shore Trail? Dave's not here anymore, but I know he was supposed to order them.
Mayor, Mr. Counsel, they have been ordered. And I guess, I don't, Ryan, do you know? Have you heard of that?
They should be coming soon. So along with the signs, we're also putting some big flags on them. So they're visually pop out more than just a normal sign. I will keep those up for, through the winter. So, yeah, that's that.
Thank you.
All right. Dan?
Uh, just a quick update on the streaming issues that we've been having. I did, just, I had a conference call last week with our current stream, streaming provider. Went through a bunch of testing on the network, with the net testing of the system. They, at the end of the call, were basically, they don't know if it's the encoder issue or our issue. Our network reviewed it. It's not our issue, it's their issue. So they're working with a developer now to get that addressed. Aside, I have started looking at other streaming options at this point, just given the fact that we've kind of had systematic problems over the past eighteen to twenty-four months, kind of consistently with this current provider. So, and starting that process out to see if we can't find a different subscriber that would do the video streaming. Because what we're having now is not only, when we did our testing, we weren't only noticing issue with it, not archiving correctly, but we also had some buffering issues when it was live streaming out. So combination of the two, and they're not willing to fully admit fault at this point. When, so we're, we're working towards it. So at some point, a resolution will come forward.
All right. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Counsel, just a couple of quick items here. Maybe I'll defer to Ryan to go into the details on it. But we are working on a letter to the City of Columbus that we'll try to disseminate to the council ahead of time, just expressing some feedback on the closure of Eureka slash Hornsby in Columbus, as they move forward with their construction. And so Ryan was able to give a little more detail on that at the meeting last Friday. So we will continue to kind of monitor that. But our basic premise is we want it closed as little as possible. But they're attempting to use that as staging for some of the cement operations that they're going to be doing on site. So there'll, there'll be some closure there. It's just a function of trying to mitigate, minimize, and, and work with people there. But we'll be wanting to get feedback on, on our, feedback to Columbus, as far as that goes. Looking to do the city council goal-setting session. Originally, we had planned on the workshop next Monday. And so maybe I'll connect with the mayor and kind of talk about that a little bit more, as far as workshop or goal-setting on next Monday. But the original intention was to have, have kind of round two on goal-setting there. So something to be thinking about. I'll maybe defer to the mayor on the open-to-business meeting that was held last week, just to kind of go through that. And we've had a request to be more aggressive or intimate with the microphones at times. And I know it's a hard one to, to get on, to get, but literally, you do have to kind of be about right here at times. And it's not a, a natural thing to do. But as you start to talk like, like that, these are designed to not pick up every moderate, moderate conversation. They are designed to give you a little flexibility if you want to reach over. But that means you got to be pretty aggressive about getting in there and, and using it. So just, just be cognizant of that, so it can be help the video production experience, and also for people in the room. So I just wanted to pass that on, and maybe we'll try to think about that and do some reminders. But it, it, it does take some time to be intentional about that. So that's all, Your Honor.
All right. Thank you. Jay?
No comment.
Speak up.
Biggs, it over to you, Ryan.
Mayor, City Council, just give you some updates on the construction projects. The local mill and overlay project should be done paving by Wednesday, and cleanup to follow, and some minor punchless work, but nothing major there. So Headwaters Parkway, we got pretty much everything done, other than some pathways in the wear course. We're holding off on the wear courses. The Headwaters Tenth, Ninth and Tenth Development have a significant amount of dirt to be trucked out of there, that we're letting those operations proceed prior to us putting down the final mat, just to try to prolong what we've just invested in there. Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, we talked about having a joint workshop prior to our city council workshop in November. So tentatively, we haven't scheduled there, dialed it in a hundred percent, but five thirty PM. So an hour before our normal workshop on, workshop, Nov- on November twentieth. We are in the process, or they are in the process of trying to schedule another technical advisory committee meeting sometime between October twenty-third and seventh, where we're going to talk about the rule revisions. I've had some conversations with the City of Wyoming, too. So I think both of us municipalities stand on the same stance of where we want things to go. And, you know, that we look for some direction from you guys as well, to help advocate some of those rules and those previous comments that we've submitted, that we want stuff more parallel to what Rice Creek's permitting, for one, and continue to work from there.
Would it be possible to see if we can have a joint workshop with Wyoming, us, and Comfort Lake, Forest Lake, all in one room?
Defer to the administrator.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's what we were hoping for. So, yeah, we'll, we'll try to reach out to Wyoming and invite them to the meeting that we're looking at.
Uh, next Tuesday night, at six thirty PM, will be a task force meeting number three for the comprehensive plan. So please put that on your agenda, or follow up with any questions. That'll be kind of a critical points in the plan, as a lot of public engagement has been completed, and surveys been completed. So a lot of info, new information to go over. I thirty-five project. So one thing that Mendot has done with this project is basically have hired a communications team, another, a consultant over the top of them, that's going to guide a lot of the communications with the project. We held our first meeting last Friday. They actually rented office space downtown and for the design-build team of the project. Right at, I think, one forty-six is the address, just right on North Lake Street here. So they have a pretty significant suite area, a lot of offices. So as the design bill goes on, you know, we're right here in town with, with the team. And a lot of the meetings will continue there. Some of the things that were brought up is the, the plan currently for Hornsby is to close that April two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and nineteen. Obviously, we'll write a letter on opposing that closure for that length of time, blah, 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 whatever. But that'll be going out here shortly this week. With that being said, Mendot has started a new program that we're aware of. It's cooperative funds that we basically can ask for assistance on doing some temporary things. And for, for instance, I will be asking for some money for some additional signage. Remember when we kind of did the Broadway project, and we have that private drive on the north side of Clear Lake there, such as private drive, no local access, stuff like that, just to protect our residents and not have drive-through situations, kind of like City Minnetaka just did with one sixty-nine, and when that stuff does prevail. So some good points, though, to add to the contractor that was selected, Schaefer Contractor. One of the major components that they scored well within the project is they're going to maintain one more lane than required per the contract throughout the duration of the thirty-five project. So that'll be a benefit thing. I don't know if any of you guys have recently driven six ninety-four between basically Snelling and Rice this summer, how they've really separated the lanes with barricades and built within and outside. That's what their plan really is to do with the corridor here. So it'll be smooth, easy to follow. You're not going to have to, each week, wonder where you're kind of going. So I like the way they did that. So it actually, I think that's going to be a good thing, and they're going to maintain additional lane for the contract. Some other things, the project communication team has very engaged about, wants to know how, what's appropriate for your guys' level of engagements. At this point, I would invite them to one of our council meetings, just to give them an, give an updates of where their perspective is. So you guys can kind of gauge where you think your questions or concerns might go as this project proceeds. You see a lot of stuff, some signs that are going to show some construction starting here the eleventh. That's going to be some offline. We'll have some temporary lane closures during the approved Mendot working, work zone period. So southbound is obviously a peak time, so they won't be able to have any lane closure southbound. They'll, northbound in the mornings they will, and then vice versa in the afternoon. So we'll follow that. There are some nice PDFs that will show construction staging that I'm waiting to get back to me, so I can share with you guys, too, so you can see visually what the impacts of the project will be, and where we'll be in eighteen and falls, you know, summer and stuff like that. They have all that kind of laid out now. We're not really looking at a lot of ramp closures in eighteen either. There will be some weekend stuff here and there when we're dropping some bridges and stuff like that. But really well-thought plans. Obviously, communication's important, as they've hired a consultant to guide that. And then, you know, obviously Mendot's communications involved. Schaefer contracts, no rookie to this kind of a project. So I think things will go well, and we'll continue to proceed with what we have. So if there's any questions.
I think, just, can you make them aware of our Fourth of July activities, to see if they can schedule?
That's one thing. They've already requested the group and the contractors. I'm going to work with Jamie first, and we'll develop a complete list of dates of community events. And then I'll also provide a complete inventory or staff directly, director, directly, can't talk right now, like police chief, fire chief. So they'll have everybody's numbers, contact in the event something is emergency response. And probably some of you guys will be invited to some future meetings to discuss any local issues or concerns, traffic control, emergency access, and stuff like that. So got, obviously, a lot bigger communication process with this project than we, you guys saw in just the double roundabout project. And I think things went well there. But this one's got a whole different animal to it, too. So a lot of traffic in the summer.
Do you know if this project will go on weather-related, or is it going to be shut down during the winter?
Uh, they do plan to stop in January and February. But if it's really nice, you know, they're going to keep working.
Any other questions for Ryan?
No.
All right. We'll move on to council updates. Sam?
Uh, I have no updates. I missed the last, uh, school meeting, school board meeting, so I don't have any updates for you.
I attended the Airport Commission meeting last Wednesday. There wasn't much to report on, other than I believe, and Sam can correct me if I'm wrong, that once this last hangar approval is due within, I think, with, did we put it off? We tabled it for thirty days?
Thirty days, yeah.
And once that is completed, we're built out, right?
Well, they'll all be spoken for. Yeah, because the rest of them are all recent.
There'll be no more leases.
That's right.
And then the other item of concern is Hangar E. And I, maybe Aaron, you can fill me in on what happened Friday?
Uh, Mayor, Mr. Counsel, so for those that aren't aware, Hangar E, you know, seen some fairly significant damage during the, the storm on July twelfth. And we've been working with the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust to get a final adjustment done on the project. And the, the assessment basically is repair, demo, not, you know, allow continued use of the building, but maybe not make significant repairs. And so the commission's going to look at those options and make a recommendation to the council. It's in a fairly stable condition right now. We were out there Friday with the League of Cities Insurance Adjuster and another contractor. And we anticipate that, I think this will be our third bid on the project, will be provided. And we'll, we'll see what they do from there. They'll let us know what they are willing to provide. And, and we'll have to make a judgment on fix or not fix there.
All right.
And the only other comment I'd like to make in regards to that Airport Commission, that it was very civil, very businesslike, and I was appreciated at least by me, and I'm sure the other members of the commission. So we're stepping in the right direction.
All right. Thank you. Well, I had a fairly busy week. Had the opportunity to attend PetSmart's grand opening, and to talk to their regional managers while there's, as their store manager there. And a lot of positive things for Forest Lake. Really excited to get here, a nice store. But it was really interesting hearing how, you know, their demographics of their customers, and stores in Coon Rapids and Maplewood are pulling, you know, were, customers were pulling from Forest Lake all the way over to those stores. So a great sign for potential for Forest Lake, for a lot of these businesses. And we have to make that known. But they're really happy to be here, and congratulations for that. Last Friday, we attended the open, or I attended the open-for-business meeting, grand opening here at the city center. It's a great program for entrepreneurs, or for any business in Forest Lake, actually Washington County in general, to offer them advice, resources, tactical, any, anything that they're looking for that they may need a hand with, including some financing that they might not be able to get from a bank. But Washington County is spearheading this. We're joining the other six metro counties on it. And I was really surprised with the fact that we've got, in Washington County, over seventeen thousand entrepreneurs, single employee-type businesses. If we can help them to add one employee apiece, it's a huge difference. So a great program, and want to thank Washington County, Chris Ng, for spearheading that and bringing it up here to Forest Lake as well. I've also had the pleasure to deal with some local people that are having issues again with our watershed district. And, you know, we got to work that through. I'm looking forward to some of these meetings, so that we can iron that out, and, and hopefully all work towards a, a positive outcome, and, you know, help, help these businesses as well. as well. Forest Lake Historical Society had their annual meeting on Saturday night. I attended that as well. Great group, uh, very dedicated, uh, they did a great job with their displays, other things there, so real fun evening. Um, I also had the opportunity last week to meet with Dr. Massey, had some discussions, hopefully, uh, open up and continue to open up some, um, level of communication between the city and the school district, talking about traffic issues there, talking about, um, potential for future job training, uh, which is something the EDA also came up with, uh, that we need to, you know, have sources here to help train people to, um, open up the opportunity for jobs that are here now that, that we don't have that for. Um, a few other things, and, you know, see where it's going, talked about the bond issue that's coming up. So, um, it was, it was a great meeting and, and hopefully, uh, be able to continue that and get more cooperation between the city and the school district itself, so. With that, Mike, I'll take it over to you.
I have no updates.
All right. Mara?
I have no updates tonight.